Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the White House City Council meeting of March 5th, 2024. If you would please rise from over the silence and fall for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Aug, will you please call roll?
Elmore?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
Heck?
Present.
Smith?
Present?
Harcar? Present? Dixon?
Present.
Brown?
Present.
Present Potter?
Present.
Uh, we have got several minute meetings to be approved, which would include the February 20th, 2024 Agenda and regular meeting minutes, the February 27th, 2024 Agenda and Committee meeting minutes, and the February 27th Agenda and Special Council meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the February 20th, 27th, and Special Meeting Minutes. On the 27th, Congress.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Dixon, for the approval of the aforementioned minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. We are going to go out of order on our agenda this evening, since we've got some special presentations and some resolutions. And so with that, we are going to move right on to Resolution 3, 2024, recognizing Shane McGee as a 2023 Police Officer Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 3, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce Resolution 3, 2024.
Suspend the rules.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Number three?
Yes, number three.
Do you need verification of copies?
Oh. I am sorry, I did miss that. Um, Ms. Aug, will you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for catching that. So we'll now go back to Resolution 3, 2024. Uh, Mr. Morrison, with the second by Ms. Elmore, introduced this for this and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Resolution 3?
Three.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move present.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, for the adoption of Resolution 3, 2024. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 3, 2024 has been approved. If the chief would like to come forward and make the presentation of the resolution? Exactly. Starting her public speaking at early age.
Well, if I may, uh, Mr. President, just say just a couple of words.
Please.
About Officer McGee before I read that briefly, and that is Officer McGee's been here for a few years with us, and each year he seems to keep doing close to giving this very important run here. Uh, he's been up, I think, almost from the moment he arrived with his peers, uh, voting for him to be the Officer of the Year to represent their shift or whatever he worked. Not only that, but I gotta say, I don't know if I've ever told him this, but I think I have, that from almost the time he's come in, he's one of those folks who came in with a lot of experience already, and you could recognize that right away when they not worked in or interacted with his peers. Rarely do you ever hear anything negative, and if you do, it's usually something we need to work on and adjust it. So from that, I've always relied on him almost every year, maybe a couple times a year, I think, to ask him some advice on what we need to work on and some things, because he's just that kind of person. Whether he's in a supervisory role or not, he's absolutely helping me just as the partner for a safe and wide office. Congratulations, I appreciate it, and we wish that. Uh, this says, whereas this entire council handily recognizes all its citizen employees who have performed their duties faithfully in a consistent, persistent, outstanding manner, we recognize Shane McGee as the 2023 Police Officer Employee of the Year, awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Congratulations.
We now have Resolution 4, 2024, recognizing Frank Levens as a 2023 Labor Service Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as an additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 4, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce Resolution 4, 2024, after suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Uh, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of Resolution 4, 2024.
Second?
Uh, there's now been a res- a, uh, motion to adopt Resolution 4, 2024 by, uh, Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Heck, is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 4, 2024 has been approved. Ms. Thomas, if you'd like to come down and make the presentation?
He's actually not here tonight, so I am planning on taking it over to the service garage and presenting it to him in front of, um, the rest of the service guys tomorrow.
Okay, then please convey our thanks and gratitude for all his hard work.
Thank you.
Resolution 5, 2024, recognizing Ian Fellers as a 2023 Firefighter Paramedic Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 5, 2024, and the suspension of all rules.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce Resolution 5, 2024, after suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second?
There's been a motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 5, 2024 has been adopted. Chief Moore, would you like to please come forward and make the presentation?
I also would like to make a couple comments. So, uh, Ian's one of those guys that kinda works in the background, and you don't really see what he's doing all the time, and then you pull out the nomination for his employee of the court, and you say, gee whiz, Ian's been busy out there doing a lot of things that, that, uh, the other people aren't doing. So with that, Ian, I, I thank you so much for all that. Uh, one of the things that stuck out for me is what they wrote here. Uh, Ian comes to work with a smile on his face and a ruthless compassion for others around him. He is a tide that lifts all of us to be better. So, thank you, Ian. So, uh, Ian Fellers is a committed worker and places division first. He's the type of guy that doesn't walk past a problem, instead he digs into it. People like Ian are what makes the fire department great. Throughout the years, he's stepped up in many different ways to support the overall mission to the city. His hands-on approach to figuring out and fixing important equipment cannot be understated. His dedication to see projects through certainly amount to characteristics we should all applaud. And then once again, on top of this, Ian comes to work with a smile on his face. Thank you so much, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
His daughter is more excited than anyone else.
Yes, biggest fan in the room. Brings us now to Resolution 6, 2024, recognizing Julie Harris as a 2023 Administrative Support Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 6, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce Resolution 6, 2024, after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of Resolution 6, 2024?
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison, for the adoption of Resolution 6, 2024. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 6, 2024 has been adopted. If members would like to come down and make the presentation.
Hey, just so y'all know, right now, she's very nervous, because she doesn't know what I'm going to say. Am I wrong?
You do have that effect on folks.
So I will keep it short. The office wouldn't run without you. Um, she has this way of making sure things get done in the office. She's the sister I didn't know I needed, because that's how she keeps me going, and she does it in such a way that gets stuff done. What I didn't realize until I saw nomination forms is how much she does that outside of the office. I knew she always did it, because she always had answers and questions and stuff like that, and I didn't realize the overall effect it had on everybody else in the city. So, um, she truly is an exceptional employee, so I am thrilled to be up here to be able to give this to you. So, Resolution 6, 2024, recognizing Julie Harris as the 2023 Administrative Support Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $350 and as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. It says, whereas, it's the desire of council to handily recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner, and whereas Julie Harris is responsible and super fast to respond to any questions posed to the attorney's office, she is the definition of effective and, and efficient in that anything that has been asked of her, she has done. She is respectful and a fun coworker to interact with. If she doesn't know an answer to something, she will research it and get back to you with an answer. Julie always has a great attitude and leads by way of example. She is always quick to help people out and has a great deal of knowledge of the city with her time here. Whereas Julie Harris exceeds expectations and is responsive to the s- responsive to the city and its customers' needs, now therefore, congratulations to Julie, Administrative Employee of the Year.
Thank you. We'll now get back on the agenda of the meeting, so first up, we have a special presentation, Mayor Michael Bivens on Women's History Month.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Do you mind if I do that from, from this seat, or would you like me at the podium? I'll do it from this seat. Uh, I have a, a special proclamation, as you know, in the month of, uh, February, we celebrated Black History Month, and then on Monday, um, we, uh, started Literacy Week in the City of Whitehall, and at that time, uh, we went on Facebook Live, and I also announced that it is also Women's History Month. And so for this month, in the month of, uh, March, which I can't believe we're already here, I have a special proclamation, which is my custom. I actually circulated the proclamation throughout, uh, the city departments, and they actually added, uh, some of the words to this proclamation, but this proclamation reads, whereas, the City of Whitehall proudly joins the nationwide celebration of Women's History Month, embracing the 2024 theme, women advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion, which honors those women championing a positive future and emphasizes the imperative to eradicate systemic barriers, bias, and discrimination across all facets of society. And, whereas, the City of Whitehall commemorates the valiant women who played pivotal roles in fulfilling our nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And, whereas, women have fortified the City of Whitehall, unlocking opportunities for all. And, whereas, women have been trailblazers in our nation, contributing significantly to movements such as suffrage, abolition, labor, education, and science, notably in Whitehall, proud public servants, which lead the city council, marking a historic moment as the majority comprises women. You can clap on that. And, whereas, in recognition of Women's History Month, we proudly acknowledge and celebrate the exceptional leadership and contributions of the mayor's office staff in Whitehall, this dedicated team led by inspiring women, including directors, community affairs, administrative assistant, permit specialists, clerk of courts, deputy clerk of courts, consistently demonstrates a commitment to excellence that significantly enriches Whitehall community. Whereas, the city attorney's office, excluding the city attorney himself, is entirely comprised of exceptional women in various roles, such as the assistant city attorney, prosecutor, victim advocate, paralegal, and legal assistant. They demonstrate commendable dedication in addressing crime causes and providing assistance. In summary, the city attorney's office would like to say, we proudly declare, girls rock. Whereas, Whitehall is committed to placing women and their aspirations at the forefront of all endeavors, from advancing their rights and fostering gender, gender equity, to ensuring economic opportunities that guarantee prosperity, as well as facilitating access to health care and education. Women's perspectives will be integral in every major decision undertaken in Whitehall. And, whereas, Whitehall is dedicated to dismantling barriers that hinder working mothers from sustaining their presence in the workforce, actively seeking innovative solutions to provide the next generation of female pioneers with the resources necessary for their success. And finally, whereas, Whitehall remains vigilant in aligning itself with the hopes, dreams, and aspirations of all women and girls in our community, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Whitehall in both recorded and unrecorded ways. Now therefore, I, Michael T. Bivens, mayor of the City of Whitehall, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month, March 2024, in Whitehall as Women's History Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well, very well said. We have another special presentation this evening, which will be, uh, please, Chief?
Yes.
Would you like to turn forward? This will be addressing the Public Safety Alliance. Twice in one night.
I apologize if I don't process.
You know you're always welcome here.
I'll make this very brief. I gave, uh, Mr. President, the council and the committee, I actually wanna, I know we're live, so this is actually a message as much to the community as it is to the city council, but I do appreciate your time and allowing us to come in and discuss this on behalf of Public Safety and the Safety Director. Uh, what we're working on, this is a brief, if you're packages, I'm not sure what we've got on the slide, but on your package, I'm gonna go over the whole thing. We'll make a brief, just out of respect for your time, and let the chief there cover some of the committee members. But one of the things we're trying to do is trying to kind of follow suit with what a lot of successful communities are doing with collaboration inside the communities that they live in, and when it comes to public safety, we realize we don't have all the answers. We realize we read the textbooks, we go to the training, we go to the courses, but most importantly, what we need to do is talk to those we serve, find out what it is that they need. So we're proposing to start a public, Whitehall Public Safety Alliance. And the goal behind that is to simply foster community relations and improve safety by reaching out to not only public safety and city officials, but also to the community and, and certain people within, uh, Whitehall, help us come up with ideas and things that are needed to resolve some of these issues. I call it kind of the Town Hall 2.0, asking for their feedback as well. So the goals behind this is, is pretty simple, I think. Enhance community, uh, enhance communication channels, uh, between us and the community, uh, community empowerment, so they tell us what exactly we need. We have statistics, we have arrest numbers, but we don't necessarily always have, uh, what's going on in the neighborhood unless we're called to it. So sometimes there's things happen that we're not aware of, so that might help both of us be able to determine where we can, uh, send the, send resources to resolve some of those issues. Uh, we're looking at education, collaborative problem solving, but most importantly, number four, which is the most important one, I think, to me, is not only to, to hear from the community and get some ideas and have them have a leadership role in it, but to hold both us and the community accountable to our success of some of the goals we've come up with. We can't just come up with fancy goals and we have to actually achieve the things we ask about. So this will also include measurements and accountability. We're looking at some members I'm asking, Chief here to second to go over, but I simply wanna summarize a couple of things. Uh, we want to empower residents, and we want to do that through regular quarterly meetings, and the way we want to do that is starting tonight by presenting this to council, both so I can bring it to your attention, also so we can bring it to the attention of the count, of the, the community, but also to ask for your support and participation as well, uh, to help us with the same agenda. We're gonna look at this on a volunteer basis, so no budget needed, so we're soon, simply asking people to join us, and I think you'll be more engaged if it's something you're doing voluntarily anyway. Uh, we'll post the information on our websites and social media that we're doing this, uh, asking not only yourselves, but a couple of you, but the community as well, if you'd like to participate in this on a quarterly basis. Uh, we'll introduce it at our next Police Town Hall meeting, which is May 22nd. We haven't done a location yet, it's May, May 22nd, so that we can introduce who those committees are, so we'll all know each other, we hold each other accountable to be at these meetings and to, to make Whitehall safer. And then we'll schedule meetings from there, and then, again, I emphasize, it's something very important, this is voluntary, so there's no actual cost. What I asked the chief to do is, is talk about who's, who we're looking at, maybe who we're looking at on this, on this committee to join us, and why it's important also for fire.
Yeah, so, uh, as, as, uh, the chief talked to me about this, one of the things that, uh, really stood out to me was collaborative problem solving, and you go back to when we were really dealing with a lot of overdoses, we went out and talked to a lot of community members and pulled a lot of ideas together, and that's when we come up with the Safe Station Program, and, and we really, um, did a nose diet on the amount of, uh, heroin overdoses and drug deaths that we had, so, um, but as times change, different problems pop up, so these are, uh, these things will be very important to us, because we don't always know, we know what problems we see, but we don't know what problems the community sees always. So the feedback is going to be very important for us. Uh, some suggested numbers, uh, we looked at, uh, the chief looked at other programs, um, these suggestions emulate those. Uh, mayor, safety director, fire chief, police chief, city attorney, city council, member safety chair, civil service commission member, human resources, service director, information technology representative, and three to five community leaders. These might be faith leaders, educators, business members, residents, or county services, so.
No, we're just, uh, you know, just take the chief by. There's something that is very important to us, we recognize both from the Safe Stations, we've done it from our Town Hall meetings, we've done it from our now, we do these hotshot surveys that you might see on the website. We get so much more when the community and others are partnering with us, because we think we have all, we know the police stuff, we know the fire stuff, but I know the street stuff, might not know the money stuff, might not know the, what the mayor needs, might not know what council needs, or even what the community needs. So when we're all talking to each other, those resources get applied more effectively. So I appreciate your time, and we'll answer any questions you want, and we're just asking you to join us in drafting this work.
Well, so, so, uh, how is this, uh, being, uh, how is this being started, then? You say the May 22nd Police Town Hall meeting is the, the starting off point, or?
Well, I'm hoping, Mr. Councilman, I'm hoping that by that point, we actually have it in place. But most of them are city officials, as you saw, and so that, we've already talked about it, and we'll talk about it more in our team meetings, but we're gonna put something out on our website, we're gonna release it to the community and hopefully they'll apply, and then we'll talk with them, engage them, make sure that, uh, they understand what it's about, basically interview them, quasi-interview. We'll select a team as a group, and then from there, we'll move forward to setting those meetings up, and then introduce them at the Town Hall meeting. Introduce the team at the Town Hall meeting.
Okay. You know, from someone who cares so much about, uh, the safety in my neighborhood and what it means to me myself personally, I think this is terrific. That's just my, my, my initial reaction. Several years ago, and, of course, the book that I always talk about, Death and Life of Great American Cities, Jane Jacobs talked about eyes on the street, and my eyes are on Donie from Robinwood down to Rita Court judiciously. And that's how I, that's how I participate. I would like to participate in this, but, uh, that, that's part of the, the quotient as well, is getting the, the public themselves to keep an eye on their neighborhoods. You could look at my name on the police, uh, logs and find out how many times I've called the police over there about a situation, a thing, something's happening there, because Mr. Dixon doesn't play. Mr. Dixon's watching out for his neighbors, for the street, et cetera, and I'm making sure that it's okay. These people, these miscreants and whoever else is coming to the neighborhood who want to, uh, be up to things, they don't like it. Too bad. And I wish everyone had that spirit about safety, because it's my responsibility, yours, everyone's responsibility, each in their own way, on their own street, as well. So I applaud you, I applaud everyone that is, uh, a part of making this happen, and I look forward to it being a terrific success.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chiefs.
Anything further, Councilman, sir?
Um, so in the packet, it has alliance members, and there's more than the ones you listed, so alliance, is it all of the alliance members you listed gonna be, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Because I saw this, I think this engagement with the schools would be a good choice, and I didn't hear you mention that, so, but I saw it on here.
That's a perfect question, I thank you for that. It's, um, I don't, I don't imagine, I can't even conceive that we would turn too many people away.
Yeah.
Those are just all suggestions, I think.
Okay, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like how inclusive this is, I mean, you've really thought about everybody being at the table, so I think that's fantastic.
Great job. Thank you, very, very well done, gentlemen.
And so, members of council, in the upcoming weeks, um, the administration will submit, um, a, an ordinance or a resolution, um, to, uh, to actually create this commission, because that, obviously, you know, it's in the power of council to create, you know, this new commission, um, so there'll be more, uh, to, for us to talk about, maybe in committee meetings, on what this looks like and what some of the qualifications of the members will be, uh, that will be on the commission, but it's the providence of council to actually create this new commission, because we've never had this in Whitehall before.
Thank you.[1786.07]
Thank you.
We now have got a public hearing on Ordinance 12024. Ordinance 12024 is a amendment to zoning map attached to Chapter 1104.01 of the 2023 Codified Ordances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under Section 1104.03H to permit buy, sell, auto sale LLC company to operate a vehicle and large equipment repair business in the Main Street District. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for Ordinance 12024, and ask the applicants to come forward, and please state your name and address to the record, and we don't have anybody with us this evening. Okay. I will then ask if there's any proponents for this piece of legislation. I'll then ask if there's any opponents for this piece of legislation. I would then ask the Service Director, if she could, since she sits on planning, to discuss the findings of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so the Planning Commission did vote unfavorably for the application. I think the reason was that the intent of the zoning code update is to shift businesses on Main Street towards a quality-of-life-focused business, and we are moving away from auto-oriented establishments.
Thank you. Ms. Aug, were any comments made in Council Office either for or opposed to this?
No.
There was nothing? Okay. Well, if there are no further comments, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:31. We'll now move into our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met on Tuesday. We have two pieces of legislation on minutes on file, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkard.
Yes, Community and Elder Advocacy also met last week. We have no pending legislation at this time, but our minutes are also on file.
Thank you. Committee Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Committee of Fire Safety Standards Enforcement also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have Ordinance 001 up for a third reading this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening, and we'll meet sometime next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. There are no pending legislation right now. Our minutes are on file, and we will be meeting sometime next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last weekend. Tonight, we have Women's 10 and 13 on the agenda, as well as Resolution 3 and 5. And we will meet again sometime next week after 6:30, and our minutes are on file.
All right, thank you for that. Parks Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again on this committee Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Official reports, Mayor Vevins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, just a couple of things I want to put on council's radar. City of Whitehall, when we voted on Issue 2, went 72% in favor of that issue, which means Whitehall is very much in favor of the legalization of marijuana. The reason why I am putting that on council's radar is, in the past, council has created an ordinance, created a moratorium on dispensaries and outlawing them in the City of Whitehall. So to the extent that that issue is still circulating through the State House, and to the extent that we are putting together some of the fine touches on that, expect in the future, something to come to council as it relates to that ordinance, just so that we can be in line with what the City of Whitehall residents want, but also in line with what's going to be state law. Secondarily, Heart of Ohio, I have a commendation. I went to a listening session with them today. If you're familiar, Heart of Ohio is on 5,000 East Main Street, and what a fantastic healthcare facility that is servicing the residents of the City of Whitehall. If you are any person in the City of Whitehall that needs any type of care from dental to mental health, even women's reproductive rights are forefront at Heart of Ohio. It is just a fantastic facility, and I invite anyone within the City of Whitehall to consider that, you know, as one of your first choices for your healthcare. And then lastly, I have a commendation to the fine students that ran the Black History Month proclamation last month. And as you saw, they came up and they did that, but what I did not know is that a seed was planted in those young people, and they invited me unknowingly to what I just thought was just a Black History Month celebration, and it turned out that those four students created the very first black culture club for the City of Whitehall, taking applications, and actually did a full program with over 200 students with music, poetry, history. It was, hands down, the very best Black History Month celebration I've ever seen in my life. It was incredible, and I just wanted to just state that publicly, that we just never know the seeds that we plant, we never know the things that we inspire, and you think that you're doing something small, but then, all of a sudden, it balloons into something so beautiful, and I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly again, because I was just floored by it, and it was just an amazing experience.
Thank you. Very good information, much appreciated. Attorney Nick Ademas.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Our victim advocate, our new victim advocate has started. Her name's Hannah Dugan. She's starting her third week this week. She started on President's Day. She has been phenomenal so far. We've had some opportunities, starting on President's Day, allowed for some in-office training and get to know each others, and just going through the day-to-day stuff that will be going on, because courts were closed. So it's been great. Before I give you my number that I want to talk about this meeting, part of the victim advocate's job is what we call 4D arraignments. We call it 4D because that's the courtroom they occur in, at the courthouse, courtroom 4D. And that's where all the jail arraignments happen. So this is someone that's been arrested in the past 24 hours, they're in jail, they're piped into a TV, and they have their arraignment. Most of these cases are victim cases. So there are domestic violences, are assaults, are criminal trespasses, sometimes are aggravated menacings, there's a victim associated with this. These happen fast. Persons arrested, we get notified at about 4:00 AM that this person's going to be in court somewhere between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And that's when the victim advocate jumps into gear, because they have to get the police reports, because we have to tell the judge what happened, so that we know how to ask for bond. They run criminal histories and help get criminal histories, they help find out how many times this person failed to appear for court before, because that's something the court wants to know when setting bond, are you likely to show back up? They also have to make contact with the victim. Is the victim going to be there? Are they not going to be there? Do they want a protection order? Do they want this person that was a partner in their home excluded from being in their home, so that they are protected and safe where they are at? And all of this happens in just a matter of a couple of hours. A normal day, we don't really have a normal day, one or two here and there, is pretty average. Three to four, maybe five, is a busy day. And that's a lot, because it takes a lot of time to do those protection orders and fill out all the paperwork. My number this meeting is nine, because on Hannah's first Monday that she had to work, we usually have more arrests on the weekend, because there's not arraignments, also happened to be a full moon weekend. So on her first Monday, after essentially three days in the office, she had nine 4D arraignments to do on her first Monday. Made me a little worried, because it's a lot. So I talked with Kylie, our prosecutor down there, and Hannah knocked it out of the park. You know, I was worried, so I even called her, how'd it go? Little stressful. She had a smile talking about it with me, had a few questions, but said things went great. So it's only, like I said, she's starting in her third week, but she's learning a lot, and I think she's going to take some of this stuff as we start to move forward now, once we get that solidified, some of the stuff hopefully that Lorena had started to expand that. So it's an exciting time for us.
Good.
And that's all I have today. If there's any questions.
Well, that's quite a bit of information, and very glad that Hannah's hit the ground running. That's baptism by fire, for sure.
It absolutely is.
So that's wonderful news. So thank you for that report. Hunter Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, yesterday, the Auditor's Office Tax Department began working 10-hour shifts to cover tax season. They will be working Monday through Thursday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that will continue to the end of April. So even though tax day is in the middle of April, we traditionally have people coming in filing late for days on end after the deadline, so we just come to expect it, and we will be ready for them. Also, want to advise council that we will be coming to you with some legislation that will be a revision of Ordinance 111, 2023. This was the, toward the end of the year last year, this was the change in the end-of-month transfers. Mayor Maggard prepared that legislation based on what she knew at the time, and we have had some changes in the funds that are affected by those transfers. This is where we transfer money from the general fund at the end of each month into some various funds, many of them capital funds, and in any case, some of those, we are going to ask for an increase in percentage, such as the water sewer mandate, and others we will be looking to reduce. But we're trying to find a balance that will work for the rest of the year with the changes that we've got in the affected funds. Other than that, I ask for favorable consideration on Resolution 7, 2024.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Ms. Collins.
Thank you. I wanted to present a little bit of detailed information. Mayor Vevins mentioned last week the water mine project that we are working on this year, and the OWDA loan that we are applying for. I, you guys have quite a few pieces of information up there, I'm hoping I don't, you know, overwhelm anybody, but back in December of last year, council approved Ordinance 098, 2023. This was to apply for and accept the OWDA loan. So based on that, Megan and Zach had moved forward with all of the information, and I was able to finish out that application process and submit that for approval. So our hopes are that that will be approved at the end of this month. I am told that, once the approval happens, that the funds will be released the next day, so we could have funds by April 2nd. And so, just to look at numbers, you guys will see in front of you, the tiny little font that's three pages is our actual contractor's bid. We do have a contractor that we have executed, that is for greasy trucking and paving. And in the yellow here, you'll see that the bid and the contingency comes to approximately $17,371,000, and we are working to secure the loan for $15,512,000. That will cover a 30-year loan. I believe our interest rate is somewhere between 4.2 and 4.9. Because we were applying last month, the rate may have changed, but I'm willing to hear that, but it will be in that range. So with that, moving forward, our first loan payment will not be due until July of 2025. The projected payment towards that loan will be $151,000, and that will be paid from our water surcharge fund. So our residents have been receiving water surcharge on their water bill, and that has been going into a separate fund specifically to pay back this loan. The city will also do a bi-annual payment just for maintenance, and this is coming from the revenue from our water sewer mandate fund, which is one of the funds that Steve was actually just speaking about, that is taken from the end of the month from our 101. And to jump a little bit, hopefully not too confusing, Baker Tilly was hired to do the projections for our water surcharge. Currently, we have $494,000 in that fund, and by July of 2025, when our first payment is due, we will have approximately $1.4 million, which is plenty to cover our first payment of the $1 million. And then, going forward, that is an estimated annual revenue of $1,087,000 each year. So we will be able to cover our annual loan payment, as well as our maintenance bi-annually.
So the loan is to pay for the projects?
Correct.
And then the surcharge, the money from that, is to pay the loan?
Correct.
Because it's a lot of money up here?
It is.
And so much money over here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
None?
Wow.
All right. Well, if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
That brings us to Director of Public Safety, Mr. Gray.
Please be here. I have an official report tonight, but I would like to congratulate you on those a year.
Thank you. And Treasurer Aljend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have an official report tonight. I just echo the auditor's comments on the end of my transfer percentages, and that is all.
Okay, and for that, I thank you. There have been no official reports filed in the council office since our last meeting, which brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Claims. And there have been no Communications, Petitions, and Claims filed in the council office since the last meeting. This now brings us to our first poll public of the evening. I'd invite anybody to come forward. There is a sign-in sheet. Just, would you state your name, and then put the rest of the information on the sign-in sheet, and you have up to three minutes.
Yeah. Should we?
What's my line? For the older people up here.
How you doing?
If you would just state your name, maybe don't...
I'm Brian Weston, resident of 205 Park Lawn.
Thank, which you didn't have to say, but thank you.
Just wanted to say, as an active resident here in Whitehall, I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all that you do. Thank you for acknowledging Women's History Month and Literacy Week, and thank you for being attentive about engaging all of us since you started. And I just want to say, I just continue, I've been here since 2016 in Whitehall, and I'm proud about where Whitehall is headed right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward? Okay, well, then we'll move on to, so before we're done verifying our copies, we'll move on to our third meeting. It's an Ordinance 1, 2024, amended the zoning map attached to Chapter 1104.01 of the 2023 Codified Ordances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under Section 1104.03H to permit buy-and-buy auto sale LLC company to operate a vehicle and large equipment repair business in the Main Street District.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 001, 2024, and move for the adoption.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Smith to introduce Ordinance 1, 2024, second by Ms. Heck for its adoption. It's ready for discussion. Ms. Aug, please call Rold.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
No.
Heck?
No.
Smith?
No.
Harkard?
No.
Dixon?
No.
Brown?
No.
Ordinance 1, 2024 has been defeated. Second reading. Ordinance 10, 2024, authorizing and approving a supplement appropriation, an amount of $12,000, from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101 to the Building Lot Maintenance Expense Account 101.91.
Heck?
No.
Smith?
No.
Harcar?
No.
Dixon?
No.
Brown?
No.
Ordinance 1, 2024 has been defeated. Second reading. Ordinance 10, 2024, authorizing approving a supplement appropriation in the amount of $12,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund 101 to the building lot maintenance expense account 101.950, .53,300, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 10, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I second that. I'd like to speak on that, if it's okay?
Yes.
Let me suspend the rules. I'll ask for a suspension.
Okay.
Okay, so did you second that, Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Elmore, with the second by Mr. Morrison, has introduced ordinance 10, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules. Is there a discussion?
Yes. As y'all probably know, I had a discussion with the mayor a few weeks ago on this issue and the expense out of this account. He was gracious enough to provide me with nineteen pages of receipts to cover the expenses. I have thoroughly reviewed them, and thank you, Mayor, for the information. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is that something that is, just so that I have a better understanding, is that something that we should be reviewing all of the receipts for all of these when we're voting on these? Is that a typical thing?
That's your purview, but no, not required if you don't have any issues with it.
Okay, thank you.
My, if I might add, my only question was, and I wasn't aware of where the budget was previously, but evidently the budget was decreased in that account on the last budget through, and the expense came pretty fast. I was just curious as to why it was exposed or done away with totally. It wasn't, there were still some funds, according to my calculation, in there. It's just a question as where the money went quick.
Absolutely.
But I was told that the budget was decreased, and there was no anticipation prior to that. So I can get with it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 10, 2024 has been adopted. Under first reading, we have ordinance 5, 2024, which is being read by title only. This was tabled on January 16th, 2024, amending section 1103.02(c), building placement, amending the zoning map attached to chapter 1104.01 of the 2023 codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, changing zoning on property located on Ferry Boulevard, partial numbers as noted in the ordinance, from STUR to residential estate district.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance 05, 2024 indefinitely.
There has been a motion by Ms. Elmore to table ordinance 5, 2024 indefinitely. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Harcar, thank you. There has been a second by Ms. Harcar. Is there a discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you explain more what that means, table indefinitely, we remove it from the agenda or what's that?
It gives away from the agenda, yes. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 5, 2024 has been tabled indefinitely. Ordinance 13, 2024, authorizing approving the mayor to sign a contract with the Internal Order of Police, Capitol Lodge 9, the contract term January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026, and declaring emergency.
Oh, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce this ordinance 13, 2024, and move for the suspension of rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce ordinance 13, 2024, and move the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please. Have a couple of questions on this. Mr. Mayor, could you tell us when this was agreed to by the city and what date it was? The reason I'm asking is for the 30-day clause in the ordinance. I'm wondering when that actually expires or...
I know we're still within the timeframe, but the exact date, I can follow up with you on that. I don't have that with me right now. But it was sometime mid-January when that happened. But we're still within the timeframe, and we have an agreement with the FOP, so all of the provisions that are in it were sound to agree to it.
Okay. And the wage reopeners clarified in there for October this year, reopen for wage discussions.
Right. Any further discussion? Ms. Allen, would you please call roll?
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt ordinance 13, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, to adopt ordinance 13, 2024. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 13, 2024 has been adopted. Ordinance 14, 2024, authorizing approving an amendment to the codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, 161 Table of Authorized Personnel for the Fiscal Year 2024, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 14, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules. Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce ordinance 14, 2024, and the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion?
Does anyone wish to speak on this ordinance as to... Where are my people's names? As to what's... Yes.
Oh, I believe it's just a, the only thing that I know that was requested was just an
update of the title of the communications director. And it's just a, it's not a substance, it's not an increase in salary. It's just a change to her title that as she's going out and presenting herself publicly, that she actually has the title that's conducive to what she's doing.
Thank you. That's all I got.
I didn't have a copy of it in front of me, I'm sorry.
I didn't either.
Okay. Any further discussion?
They should have removed the fiscal project manager social media position as well.
That should have been removed a while ago.
Yeah, that was already removed.
It's just marked off.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck for adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 14, 2024 has been adopted. As we've already taken care of resolutions 3, 4, 5, and 6, brings us to our last piece of legislation this evening, which is resolution 7, 2024, resolving to approve then-announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 7, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce resolution 7, 2024, and the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Just for the benefit of new members of council, I just want to explain what then-announced certificates mean.
Thank you.
This is not that we paid anybody late. This is simply, we cannot control when vendors send us invoices. And we have to have a purchase order in place to make payment of those invoices. So many times, we'll get an invoice, and sometimes we have to get the invoice in order to produce the purchase order, because we don't want to overestimate and tie up a lot of money, you know, encumbering more money than we need to to make the payment on the invoice. So this is strictly that the invoices come in, we prepare requisition, requisition will go through our process. If it's a significant amount of money, it'll go through the Board of Control. Board of Control consists of the mayor, the treasurer, and me, and we vote, you know, we discuss and vote on those particular items. In any case, the end result will be a purchase order. That purchase order will have a date that is later than the invoice, and that's simply what this is. The invoice has a date that's earlier than the purchase order that was authorized to pay it.
And it's more than, what, $3,000?
Yes.
$3,000.
More than $3,000.
Just to face a little doubt to general housekeeping, because we will see this come time and time again.
Yes, this is a regular occurrence.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison for its adoption. Any discussion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2024 has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening. And again, if anybody would like to come forward, have your statement made, fill out the log. This is to be aimed towards you alone. And if there is no... I will then move on to community debate board.
There is the Easter egg stuffing going on Monday, March 11th, at 6:30 at the Y, and then, of course, the Easter egg hunt Saturday, March 23rd, at 10:00 a.m.
What time is the stuffing?
The stuffing is at 6:30.
At the Y?
Yes. Both events are happening at the Y.
Anything else for community debate board?
I did see something posted on social media. I just wanted to share it. The CarFit was posted for, at the Whitehall Senior Center on March 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00. It's a chance for, I believe, senior individuals to go and have some safety information around driving in their car. So I just wanted to share that information.
There's also a puzzle party on March 30th at the YMCA from 2:00 to 4:00. It's a family-friendly event, and you end up getting to pick a puzzle from the theater. And of course, Literacy Week is going on right now, so.
I'd also like to say that if you're driving down Broad Street, I'm sure you've already seen that Phase 1 construction on Broad Street has begun. It will continue through the fall. If you want to avoid the intersection over there, you can take Fifth to the north or Main to the south. Just keep a lookout for construction workers and for the heavier traffic. And if you want to see any plans for this project, you can stop by City Hall or request it on the website.
Thank you. That's a great point. I just learned to make Main Street my new best friend. After getting caught in that a couple of times, so that's a very good point. Thank you. I will now move on to poll council. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our viewers, all the presenters today, and acknowledge all the employees of the year. This award speaks to their work, their work ethic, dedication, and the job of leadership, and so much more. Also want to welcome our victim's advocate, Hannah Dugan, and want to thank our mayor for the proclamation on Women's Month, advocating for diversity, equity, inclusion, and so much more. And I know you said, "Girls rock, or women rock." And also acknowledging Literacy Week. Also want to address the Whitehall Public Safety Alliance. It is a great idea, and it's a great thing when we engage the community, and it takes all the residents working together to accomplish the intended goals. And the support and the volunteerism that's going to happen is going to be amazing. And what gets measured gets done. And so our feedback is essential, and that's all I have. Thank you.
And for that, I thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everybody who showed up to the meeting tonight and was watching. I'd like to thank Ms. Elmore for her coverage of everything. You've done a great job, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to say ditto. Thank you, everybody that has watched from home and everybody that came in. Thank you for getting up and speaking. It's not always easy to do, and happy Women's History Month. And congratulations to the employees.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, who is that last?
Thank you to those who came in for the employee of the year. It's a very public announcement. To have something positive said about you on a live recording shared with the entire city, I think, is fantastic. And everybody has such great things to say about their coworkers. I think that's really cool. I looked at my, I think Lori covered it all. I look forward to hearing more about the Public Safety Alliance as we see that ordinance or resolution. I think this is going to be really cool, and I really hope residents, you know, come out, because so many people speak about it, and they want to get involved. So I really encourage, if you're interested, please get involved. This is a great opportunity.
And thank you. Ms. Harcar.
Yes. I also would like to congratulate the award winners. Lori got to go first and say all the good things right up front. So, yeah, thank you, Mayor, for your proclamation. I always want to say something, but you always say it much better than I ever could. So and I'm really excited to hear that Hannah Dugan has started. I look forward to getting a chance to meet her. I'm sure that we'll have some overlap with our work, so I get a, hopefully get a chance to meet her. Since it is Literacy Week and it is Women's History Month, I did want to mention someone. I brought my book, To Be a Drum. If anyone knows, Amina Robinson, she is a local artist. And I thought it'd be a good chance. I wanted to speak about someone for Women's History Month, and she's someone that's here in the Columbus area. If you've been to the main library, if you've been to the art museum, I'm sure there's many other places her work is around the city, but she's an amazing artist. So I just wanted to take a moment to spotlight her, because, I mean, why not have Women's History right here in Columbus? I also do want to just take a mention that Ramadan will be coming up. So I just want to, you know, welcome our Muslim neighbors and make sure that they feel comfortable and acknowledge their holiday, as well as we'll have, you know, many actual celebrations this year. The Afghan and Persian New Year will be coming. Easter will be here at the end of the month. It's hard to believe that it's that close already. And of course, then the Holi celebration will be happening as well at the end of the month. So just wanted to acknowledge those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harcar. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to everyone here in the audience who came in, those here now and those who had to leave. Thank you to all those watching from the safety and comfort of your homes. I'd like to thank Mayor Bivins for his proclamation on Women's History. Very well said. And as an avid reader myself, I want to say thank you for your efforts for Literacy Week this week. I, I, I'm so pleased that I have no words for that, which is shocking. I would like to thank the four employees, Shane McGee, Ian Fellers, Frank Blevins, and Julie Harris for their commendations tonight. You know, everyone has their parts to play in this machine called Whitehall, from the streets to the government buildings, et cetera. And I'm so pleased that they were recognized for the parts that they play in that. So congratulations to them. Thank you, Mr. Winston, for speaking up tonight. It's always a pleasure to hear from the folks out there, the citizens. And thank you for your kind words, too. Public Safety Alliance, Chief Crispin and Chief Moore. I think I already said how I felt. I think it's a terrific idea, and I look forward to seeing its movement and growth and so forth. Congratulations to Hannah Dugan, the victim's advocate. On her, is this her first week, you said?
Third.
Third week, okay. Starting new and doing such a tremendous job as she did. Women's History Month. My life has been greatly impacted by women. I don't know if it's because as a gay man, I tend to have a great relationship with women, or if it's my wonderful, dear mother, who was such a strong influence on me, and all the strong and wonderful women in my life. So it's, for me, it's not so much a women's history. And of course, as I said last month, during Black History Month, Black History is American history, and the same holds true for all of it, and women's history as well. and the same holds true for all of it, and Women's History as well. This is America. You know, it's not just simply this or that, but, you know, women have also played their roles as well. But I owe a bit of gratitude to women in my life, because, gee, I don't even know where to start or begin, but I don't want to keep everyone here all night. But it's more of a Women's appreciation for me than is necessarily history, New Year, hard, et cetera, et cetera. I think that is it. And congratulations and welcome to Ms. White, the new Communications Manager. I enjoyed meeting her tonight. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
All righty. I just want to say...
Keep your lines.
I'm not going to keep everybody, but I just want to thank everybody for making it out this evening. Congratulations to everyone that was recognized for their hard work and their service. Very much appreciate you all. I'm excited about the Public Safety Alliance and, you know, what that will lead to. I think that's a great step forward for the city. I want to thank the mayor for his proclamation on Women's Month. And I'll just finish it by saying happy Women's Month, and I'm very happy to be serving this incredibly wonderful council.
Thank you. I would also like to commend all the city employees who recognized us evening for their hard work and being recognized. That's always a very nice thing for folks to be publicly recognized. I also appreciate the proclamation on Women's History. Mayor, thank you for putting that together very well worded. I, too, am very excited about the Public Safety Alliance. I think that's a very ground-up approach, and I think that, as the chief said, this will be very accountable, and I think that's going to be very good. Mr. Winston, I'd like to thank you as well for coming this evening and sort of like to see you here as often as you used to be here.
Yes.
So I have got nothing else, and I'm hearing nothing else further from this council. I will call us adjourned at 8:12.